Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the January the 7th meeting of the Franklin County Council of Order and the first order of business is pledge allegiance by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
Please join in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Okay. Need an approval of the December 3rd Town Council meeting? There are minutes, I mean, everybody has an opportunity to attend. I guess so? Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. The next is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I do need a motion to add an update from Mayor Taylor of Highlands regarding the Highlands Road to be attended. And if I may, I'd like to ask that they be right after A on your agenda, so they can get back up to the mountain.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody else have any changes? Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, okay. All in favor, thank you. We have a public comment here, but I don't see anybody from the public here tonight. It's everybody from the fourth estate. Does anybody want to say anything in public comment? Okay, here we go. All right, new business. Presentation of Blue Zones, Sally Taylor. Ms. Taylor, welcome. We're glad to have you down the mountain tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor Scott and council members. I really appreciate your time. And I am here to give you some information. I don't know if you're familiar with Blue Zones or not. I think I forwarded some information in that if you have not had a chance to read that or gone to the website, I've got some very free general information. And I can answer any questions. I think really I'm here to ask for your blessing and green light to go ahead and pursue this Blue Zones project. I am a 20-year resident of North Carolina, although I think my heart's always belonged to the mountains of western North Carolina. I am also a 24 retired, 24-year public school teacher, 10 of those years being in Macon County and Jackson County. And I am calling myself the chief instigator of the Blue Zones project, because this is my thing I'm doing right now. A brief history about the Blue Zones. Blue Zones are areas in the world, there are maybe seven or nine of them, not a great number of them, but it's where people live long and happy lives and they have a very high quality of life. They're not, they don't have Alzheimer's, obesity is not something that's found in those communities. And scientists, when they discovered these communities, studied them and came up with nine commonalities. And just briefly, those nine commonalities are that people tend to move naturally, they aren't working out in the gym and running marathons, but they're walking across the lane for the parking lot or doing gardening or walking the dog things, they come as natural movement. They have a sense of purpose, have a reason to get up in the morning, they're out of control of their stress. Four, they don't eat until they're completely full, they stop at about 80 percent, and their diet, as you might guess, is mostly plant-based. They do eat a little bit of meat, but not much. They have a social connection, which usually is involved with wine, although there is a, one of the original communities is in California and it's a Seventh-day Adventist community and they don't drink, so that's not necessary, but the other communities have that social connection. Number seven, they belong to some type of faith organization, family is first, and then the last point is that they have a tribe, a small group of people who help them make all the choices. So a brother, two brothers, Dan and Tony Butler, use this information and create a business that can transform a community. And they come and do a site-based visit and create a specific plan for your community, which then permanently, somewhat permanently, changes the environment and creates an environment that helps people choose healthy choices.
God damn it.
The changes in health are measurable through the health rates and well-being index. These changes include double-digit drops in obesity, drop in smoking, drop in the body mass index, lower healthcare costs, increased productivity and workforce, and a boost, it is a boost to your economic vitality. So this, my steering committee, which is loosely formed right now, we are targeting all of Macon and Jackson County because in order to show that there's a measurable change in the communities, once the infrastructure, whatever it is, is put into place, they have to have a certain population and it's got to be at least 15,000. And with, even with Silva, Cashers, Highlands and Fort Worth, we still don't have that many people, so that has been brought into a Jackson County effort to get that to be just about 78,000 population. It's a great opportunity to help everyone, especially the huge number of underserved in Macon and also Jackson County and all of western North Carolina. This project requires a total community buy-in, it's not just a, it's not a government function at all. It includes businesses, schools, restaurants, grocery stores, churches, nonprofits, chambers of commerce, food banks, foundations, gyms, that's just to name a few, individuals, interested individuals. And the Blue Zones, Tony Butler will tell you that it, like New Year's resolutions that don't get very far, maybe into February by yourself, it requires community support and community buy-in for everyone to be successful in this project. Phase one is a presentation of Blue Zones by Tony Butler. I am targeting a date of the end of June, we're thinking a Tuesday night, that seems to be the best time to get people together. And they are asking for an audience of 150 to 200 people, which would include major stakeholders and community leaders, interested individuals, to come and hear this presentation that, according to Tony, is very inspiring and motivating. So that, I've already raised the money for that, and once that presentation is delivered, then the people who are there can, if they want to, vote to go on to phase two, which then is the site study, they come back and do the site study. Then there's an opportunity, once they give you the plan, if you want to accept it or not. So there's choices all along the way, and I am just right now asking for a green light, asking for your interest, and hopefully, hopefully you'll have it. And can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
At what point or does it cost us money to do it?
That is, this has, this is run by a for-profit company. They have to, because the money that comes into changing the infrastructure, whatever that would be, it could be something like putting in sidewalks or developing a walking trail, it's all individualized. The site or the plan, the study plan, is something that I would raise money for, that is a, what the word is, anyway, that's, it has to go through a whole 1C3, so donations. Then, once the infrastructure is in place, that's when money from the community starts to come in, that's where, there's a decision on whether communities want to spend that money or not. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, so basically they advise us on things we can do to make our municipality blue-way friendly, and then if we subscribe to the idea, then we can fund those projects that they've targeted?
Yes, but I don't think it's on the shoulders of any one group or any one person. It has, I think to be successful, it has to come, and I think that Tony Butler, Dan Butler would say the same thing, it has to come from a collective effort, yes.
Earlier in your presentation, you said it was something about this is not a government, not a government something, and we are the government. Would this not be more geared towards a civic group rotary or something to run for?
Absolutely, I'd imagine so, but I think they would be included. But I don't, like I said, it's not just one sector of the community that would fund this, but definitely I think the rotary would be interested in something like that.
It seems to me that if we liked the plan and everything, and part of it involved, let's say, putting Justin's bike path plan into effect, then we might decide, this is going to be so great, we're going to go ahead and do this, and that could be our part, I mean, just as an example.
I think I was, I was reacting to it when I presented to the Highlands Board, somebody in the audience says, why does this have to be a government program? And it's, it's not. So it is supported by the government, I think, in the towns and the counties by, not necessarily by money, but by like a green light. It's like, this is good, we'll make efforts to make this happen. It may eventually involve money from the city, from the county, but I don't know what the plan is and what it would be. And the reason I even started all this, once you get branded as a Blue Zones community, you can advertise that, you can put it on your sign up there and brands, you can start applying for grants and getting grants because you're a Blue Zones community.
Can I add something?
Yeah, you can.
You know, Bob and I, we were at the League of Municipalities, and maybe several of us were there a number of years ago, and Dan Butler talked, and it wasn't that your town has to do this, but you've become a part of that whole movement. And there are several communities already, for example, in Texas, we have.
Fort Worth, Fort Worth is a Blue Zones community. Naples, and I think Naples spent, of course, I have not been down, going to, I've got to meet the people to set that up, but I think from what someone else who is a resident there told me, that they spent their effort towards building bike paths. So I, so what I was going to say is the reason I started all this is that I think that all of our communities here in the mountains are already close to being Blue Zones, really and truly, and I don't think it's going to take much, and I may be wrong, we're not really building bridges and highways, I don't think, but I don't think it's going to be a stretch to make these communities, Blue Zones communities. And I'll tell you, I've had some very significant conversations, especially with the Highlands Cashers Hospital Foundation, they are very interested. This is, this Blue Zones initiative would go right in their, in their mission, in the guidelines of their mission statement, so they are very interested in that. They have promised nothing, but we've had some really good conversations.
If I'm understanding correctly, we don't necessarily have to endorse all nine things, like we don't have to tell people, hey, you should go drink alcohol, or you should join a church, it's just that's what they found in areas where people live longer. If we give you the green light, then we'll get a plan for our regional community, and we can implement slowly the ideas in the plans.
Three to seven-year project, depending on how active or, you know, how fast the funds come in or not, or whatever, but that's what Tony was saying. It's a six-month plan to get to the planning part, then once the communities buy into it, it's a three to seven-year process. And there are 40, 47 communities going through the process right now in nine different states.
But there's really no obligation to us at this point if we advance it.
No, in every point along the way, you get to say, yes, we're going to the next step, no, we're not going to the next step.
But why are we the ones who would give you the, why are we in position to say yes or no to this?
Because I'm asking.
But we don't have, what authority do we have?
You don't, that's why I'm asking when I started off, saying, I just want your blessing and your green light. I wanted to make you aware of what I'm doing, and just so that you can be enthusiastic about this. If you were, if you were all, as a group, decided that this is not something that you think is worth, worth the time of Franklin in particular, then I feel like I need four green lights, and Cashers is definitely very enthusiastic about it. Highlands said, yes, not so enthusiastically, but, so you're next, and then I've gotten presenting to the Silva Board on Thursday night to see, to see what they think. So it's just all about informing you as a board and hoping that you're interested enough to pursue. All you have to do is say yes, and then I'll invite you to the presentation costume.
Is that really what you would like for us to do tonight? That's what I was raising my hand. You would just like us to? No, you were speaking, I was just, you really would just like for us to be willing to come to your presentation when that is in June or whenever?
Yes, to be open to the possibilities of what the Blue Zones can offer, your community, Macon County, Jackson County, and Silva. Yes.
Since this isn't a vote situation, would we just like to go around and let everyone share how they feel about this, or let every council member speak as to their feelings?
I think we're sort of doing that in a way. Sure, you want to go first?
Sure, sure. I went to the League of Municipalities presentation, and I was pretty fired up by it. I found it very inspirational and left really excited about the prospect. I mean, it's a, it's a daunting thing, really, it's like we already have someone willing to spearhead it, so I'm definitely interested and in favor, as Dave pointed out, we're under no obligation, so I'm definitely interested in learning more and attending the seminar, the session we've lined up, and looking at the possibility for sure.
You did my presentation justice from your memory.
Well, his slideshow was better.
No, he did say his slideshow was awesome.
You could have brought some of the wine.
No, no, we didn't.
Ms. McCray?
Yes, I was at the presentation also, and I was ready to move to Greece after, but I decided to stay home, so it would be nice to bring, you know, Greece here, Japan, some of the nice places that they showed.
I mean, informationally, I don't want to turn down information, there's no reason that I wouldn't be supportive of being there, being at least open to the information. Same way they talk, hesitation, I had in some researches, we have a government interaction with some of, but I don't necessarily think our government interaction has to be, you said, any figure of anything, so I absolutely know, I don't think I have any issues with that moving forward, at least getting the information, seeing what they can do.
And I take it, this is not the first bite of this apple that's been tried in the world, so there are communities that already are working with this program in some ways, there must be governmental entities that have done this. So what did they do to kind of clarify, we're government, this is our role in this, you know, there must be documents coming?
That's a good question, I don't know the answer to that question. I think we are going to take a trip to talk to the mayor of Fort Worth. She was instrumental in getting that started, and that's a question I can also ask Tony next time I talk to him, how that is exactly separated. So that's, I'm sure those are, that's a question that he could answer, if you were to come to the presentation.
Will they consider Carolina Blue Zones?
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
I don't have.
I feel good to call in the counselor down on that one.
I certainly would be interested in going to the presentation and hearing more.
Yeah, I think I like it, but with certain caveats that we don't have to tell our constituents to subscribe to those nine things. And if I'm interpreting it correctly, the Blue Zone folks will study our community, tell us ways that our residents can be happier and live longer and be healthier, and it's not going to cost us any money upfront?
Yes, it will cost you money upfront. I will raise that money. I've already raised the money for the presentation.
Okay.
That was real easy, somehow. The next one's going to be a little harder, but I feel like that's my job to do that. Then, then that will buy the site visit, then, and the plan, the plan for the communities. At that point, once you see, oh, Highlands has to build out sidewalks to the city limits, they need to get, you know, chef for the school, whatever, I mean, I have no idea, but I can think of a whole lot of things.
But that's where the burden on our taxpayer base is, is in implementing the advice of the Blue Zone group.
Yes, and I think the, my steering committee will be instrumental in helping raise that money. It is all foundation money, not foundation, donation money, and it goes through a foundation. And I have a foundation that is willing right now in pencil to say, yes, we can run the money through their foundation, but they haven't said yes for sure yet, because they're still trying to figure out what they're doing. But I think this will all come through.
And we're all in this together, Silva, Franklin, Cashers, Highlands. So the Blue Zone folks will give us a plan, saying Silva needs a bridge across the river to connect their new greenway, Franklin needs some intersection upgrades on sidewalks, Highlands needs, and then as individual municipalities or counties, we try to implement these things to get certified in the Blue Zone.
That's the way I understand it, yes.
Mr. Collins?
You've gotten some feedback, most of it favorable, from individual members, and maybe that's what you're really seeking for, and I'm just not getting the right vibe. I have absolutely no problem for each individual member to speak out as individuals, and certainly to attend or not to attend. I really think that it's, I'd be very, very hesitant for us to vote on something around this table, certainly not tonight with this first presentation. And anything which speaks of religion and alcohol, I'm not certain it's the board's job as a board to promote it and then back it up with some money or effort or otherwise. And so I, I think right now where I'm leaning is if the individual as leaders of the community want to help with leaders from the other civic groups and whatever, and to attend together, that's certainly, certainly appropriate. Anything further than that, certainly this evening, I wouldn't be comfortable going further.
And I can certainly understand that. And the Highlands Board didn't vote on it, no one said no, so I said, okay, green light.
I think I'm just receptive to hearing more. That's all that I'm saying, is that I'm.
As an individual or a board member? That's, that's.
Well, I know what you're saying. I don't know that it's a, really a board thing, but I don't know enough about it. So I'm just saying it never hurts to hear more, is all.
So I would ask, basically at this point, we could come to that presentation, you don't need to vote to take your green light after that point, then that's some time when we can start to look at the governmental issue, whether or not we want to be involved on voting on both sides. I mean, I'm asking.
Yeah, we've got that back in our asking board.
Ms. Taylor, is any possibility we could get that slide presentation that was given in, were we in Raleigh when we heard it?
That's the one I think you're going to see.
Oh, they will give that soon?
Yeah.
At a community-type meeting?
I'll see money.
Oh, okay. But you've raised the money for that presentation?
Yes.
So we would not be out of the money.
Is it the end of June?
I think so. I had it originally scheduled for April, the end of April, and because this has taken longer than I thought, we really actually, because Franklin and Highlands and Cashers are all very seasonal, we feel like we need to have the seasonal people here, because a lot of them are, you know, going to be people who probably are stakeholders, major stakeholders and funders, so we moved it back to June and everybody's here.
All right, well, we'll just take it from there, if that's agreeable with the board, and we will wait to hear more about when and where, and the individual members are certainly free to explore it further.
Thank you. And I would suggest looking at, and maybe you can get more of your answers on their website, there may be a little bit more specific information, you know, quite answering your question, but I think that you might find that there. And if you wanted to email me a specific question that I could ask Tony, maybe about the separation between.
Church and state.
Is there communities that have implemented this, that we can Google it? Like, I think you said Dallas or?
Fort Worth.
Naples and Fort Worth. Loma Linda is a Seventh-day Adventist community, they are one of the original Blue Zones communities. They don't drink, so you don't have to drink to be a Blue Zones community, but that's one that you can look at. They are definitely listed on their website. The whole state of Iowa through the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance thing, they started the Blue Zones for their entire state, and they have, I don't know, maybe 10, 11, 12 different communities that are now pursuing the Blue Zones designation. So it comes from a lot of different people.
I was just going to make a comment, I definitely understand the concern about bringing religion and church into it and saying, you know, you've got to go to church or you've got to get out, or whatever, no. But having seen the actual presentation, the impression I got is that they did this study, and those were just the nine things that they found were in common in these places. They're not suggesting that those are the nine things they're going to come in and like try to force people to do, those were just what they found. Like, incidentally, all these people had an opportunity to, you know, belong to a faith community. All these people enjoyed a glass of wine every night, whatever, but it's not part of the actual program to come in and say, everybody's got to make time for booze and church.
And also their faith-based connection is loosely defined, yoga would be faith-based in their views. So that's a very loose definition of the higher power.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor Taylor, sir, will you give us an update on the NASCAR track between Franklin and Highlands?
I sure can, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk, being here in this beautiful council chamber, it's really something that we envy, yes, definitely.
Well, we'll send you a little money, see if we can help you.
Thank you. Mayor Scott and I, we've been talking about this concern, we've kind of coordinated together, and that is the problem that both communities have with tractor-trailer trucks using the Gorge Road. We have citizens in both communities that use that road every day for work, we have tourists coming and going on both sides, and it's a growing problem that dispatchers nationally tend to route large tractor-trailer trucks coming down the Gorge Road, and they do not heed the signs, they do not heed the cautions not to use that road. As you know, DOT spent a pretty big amount of money a few years ago to create a turnaround here in the Franklin area to try to divert those trucks from that road, could not do it in Highlands, and that doesn't seem to have had much effect on the problem. There's a continuation of large tractor-trailer rigs coming up and going down the Gorge Road, and it becomes dangerous to the motoring public, and it's very disruptive. So I've kind of taken it on my shoulders to try to come up with some solutions. It is not a simple process of just saying, tell your truckers, dispatchers not to use that road, it's a very complex problem. And I've been meeting with several folks to see if we could improve the situation. One of the things that I thought about, and some of our staff members in Highlands has come up with the idea, is to create a sign, signs that are really very specific for truckers coming from downtown Highlands. We want to see radar-activated signs that will have flashing lights telling tractor-trailers, do not go down this Gorge Road, but go down 106, or take it off, turn it to route. We've even come up with drawings where you could have a radar-activated sign that would be tripped with a certain-sized vehicle. So that's one of the plans, I've shared that with the DOT officials, they think it's a good step, but it would cost money, the money that DOT doesn't have, but just recently I met with Representative Kevin Corbin and some other folks. But just recently, I met with, um, Representative Kevin Corbin and some other folks, and we believe that some money can be appropriated to institute that type of sign, not only in Highlands, but also down here in Franklin. So when someone comes up on that gorge road, a trucker, before they get to that turnaround, those signs activate and flash and tell them, use the turnaround, and then they can be directed not to go up the gorge road. So that is one part of the proposal. The other thing is, I had a meeting along with our police chief and, um, a few months ago with, um, Sergeant Gary Deal of the North Carolina Highway Patrol. He's in charge of all of the, um, tractor-trailer and trucking requirements and regulations throughout western Carolina. He believes those signs would be an excellent first step, but he also believes that we need to change the, the regulations on that gorge road. If you look at those signs going up on either way, it talks about 20,000 pounds, five, four axles, or this, or that. It's really complicated. He says, from a legal standpoint enforcement, that's too complicated. And he says that he can give us a clear definition of a tractor-trailer rig, period, and we would need to get the state legislature to change the regulations to where our signs would not say four axles, 20,000 pounds, and all of this kind of stuff, it just simply say, no tractor-trailer trucks, period. And Sergeant Deal says that's very much more enforceable than all of these complicated requirements that we have now. Again, I met with, um, with Representative Corbin. I'll be re, meeting with Representative, Representative, Senator Davis in the next few, um, days to try to see if we can get some legislation changed in the House and in the Senate to where it would just simplify that to say, no tractor-trailer rigs, whether it's four axle or whatever. So those are the two big plans that we have, and that is, first of all, to create this activated sign system, which will require special funding, but we believe that can happen, and then get the regulations changed for that particular part of the road. And also, one of the things we want to do is coordinate more with the State Patrol, and every time any law enforcement agency sees a violation, make sure that the State Patrol knows without it, Sergeant Steel says he can report that directly to the folks in Washington that regulate, um, you know, interstate trucking. And that will slowly but surely make the dispatchers and the truck companies realize they need to change their practices because that always goes on their licensing, um, record and also on their insurance record. So it's a three-part attack, and that is good enforcement and making sure that the highway patrol and the federal people know that there's, there are violations and who are doing the violations, putting up the signs that are clear directing those truckers away from the gorge road, and then finally having a law that can be enforced because it's real clear language. So I just wanted to let you know, those are the things that we're trying to do. We're gonna work with, um, the DOT folks that come up with this project. I asked when we were in discussions with folks from the legislature and so forth about this, do both Franklin and Highlands need to be doing this? They said, of course, partnering is important, but one community can take the lead. So if it's up to you folks, I'll take the lead on behalf of Highlands, and we'll start working with the DOT to get this project underway on both ends of the road. Just wanted to get up there.
Mayor Taylor, we appreciate that. We do have a lot of people that live in Franklin that work in Highlands.
Absolutely.
And so I think we have a stake in this, uh, and we have, uh, we have sent a letter from, basically from the board already, just backing up what you're, you're saying, so...
Well, our next step is to get DOT to come up with a concrete project with those signs, and how much it would, Zach, what will be the exact cost? And then from there, we can start working on how to get funded and how to get implemented.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. Uh, y'all need to get back up the mountain. We really appreciate y'all coming down tonight. Thank you, sir.
You're doing such a good job, and Highlands is booming so much because of it, all these trucks are going up there to deliver goods.
Well, you know, I do tell our citizens, everything we have that comes, it has to come up by way of trucks.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Dawson, you have some budget amendments for the board?
We do. Uh, this month, you actually have three budget amendments. Um, there was two that was in your packet, and then there was one that was distributed at our seat. Um, the first one is for some funds that we received, uh, for a wellness grant, uh, through the League of Municipalities, um, through our health insurance program, and that's in the amount of $5,000. And we've set up a revenue line and an expenditure line to track that. Uh, the second one is for an insurance settlement check, uh, for the police department in the amount of $611 to be appropriated into vehicle maintenance. And then the third one is, uh, an amendment to adjust the amount that was appropriated in December by Budget Amendment Number 20. Um, the amount that was originally appropriated was $2,846, and it should have been $2,546. So this is an adjustment to, um, correct that appropriation to the correct amount.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Dawson? Not Al's. entertain a motion to, uh, I guess approve these budget amendments?
Yes, sir.
Second?
All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to set a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Sutscher, you're up, sir, for the tasting room.
Uh, yeah, this is a question that, uh, set a public hearing for tasting room, uh, for February meeting. Uh, this amendment went to Plan Board, and Plan Board did recommend a, you know, approve it. I'll have more at the February meeting and hearing if you set it tonight, but we just set that to the board.
Okay. We need, uh, I guess we need a motion to set the public hearing as, as presented by Mr. Sutscher?
I'm on it.
Mr. Kennedy, thanks, sir.
Same.
All right, we have all in favor.
We got to set a time, don't we?
Pardon?
Six oh five.
Six oh five.
I think the motion's set at six oh five.
Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm just...
Oh, okay. All right, and next is to forward the text amendment regarding the multi-tenant signs to the town planning board. Uh, Mr. Sutscher, will you, uh, pull us in, sir?
Um, I believe in your, the December meeting, we had, uh, some of the public, um, had spoken about, uh, a sign issue in the neighborhood of Big Juice Districts, and since then, the ordinance review committee has met, and, um, County Attorney John Hining has drafted a draft text to, uh, a starting ground for the planning board to look at to draft as to what the issue was they were dealing with, with that facility, which is a sensitive multi-tenant facility, um, with only having a very small sign with so many tenants in one building. So this is just for the plan board so they can discuss it and look over it and hash it out before it comes back.
Okay. Motion to forward.
Sure.
All in favor? Okay, sir. All right, the, uh, a discussion on the personnel policy regarding police service weapons. Uh, Madam Manager, you want to bring us up that date?
Yes, Sheriff, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, what you have before you deny in your agenda packet is something that, um, we need to look at adding to our personnel policy. Um, it'd be, if the board so considers, it'd be Section 7 Franklin Police Service Weapons. A full-time, sworn full-time police officer may receive his or her service weapon upon, and it actually should be retirement, after 15 years of service to the county of Franklin upon approval of the police chief and the town manager. Request for the service weapon must be in writing along with proper resignation or retirement notice, so you can take out resignation. This is just something we need to look at, um, that's come to administration's light. This doesn't really tackle it in our current personnel policy. And I do apologize, on the second, um, attachment to this is the state statute that deals with this and allows you as a government board to make this, and I apologize that it's actually green highlight, but when I looked online, it looks like it's been blacked out, but that is green highlight. Um, but one thing we're asking the board to do is just give us some guidance on what language you would suggest that we put in the personnel policy. Also, one thing, if the, is the board's will to report with this, there would need to be an amount set. Um, I know our human resource officer, Mr. Talent, has reached out to several municipalities, and it looks like it's around a, a dollar, um, for those who wish to, to take their service firearm with them. But with that, Mr. Talent, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, not really. Uh, you just may want to consider whether that 15 years, um, makes sense to you, because the statute really does, uh, put it in your hands, um, of how to go about awarding that service weapon upon retirement. Um, so if you want to just look at the years and, of course, that, that amount of money, so other than that.
It's, it's pretty standard across the, the state for an officer. But i- i- it's not to serve somebody that maybe comes in and finishes their past three or four years and then get the service rea, it's more of a recognition of the long-term with that particular town, and you're probably talking about, uh, the value of a, of a service weapon can run between $300 and $500. Does that be about correct, Chief?
Yeah, the last one involved a little less than $400.
Yeah, so... Okay, what's the feeling of the board? Are you, you okay with adopting it as presented by the manager and the human?
I just got a question.
Oh, you've got a question?
I like the dollar, I like 15 years. In some crazy circumstance, if we want a, a 11-year officer to have their service weapon, it's at the discretion of me.
Unless you're gonna be setting a precedent then, breaking your own rules. So, but this is pretty standard, at least 15 years. Some, some towns, it's, it's even more, so. I know that when I retired, I, I didn't want nothing going, quite frankly.
Well, you always want to have the opportunity for the unusual circumstance. Someone fires his gun and saves five lives and gets almost killed in the process. He might want, might want to give him that gun whenever he retires.
Yeah, that would be more of an award, though.
Well, whatever, but given, yeah, given the, the window to look at each individual circumstance, I certainly believe 15 years, a dollar, would be, uh, be nice to have it on the books.
That would be something that would need to come from the board anyhow, and award from the town.
Yeah.
So it'd have to come from the board anyhow.
Probably would.
So I don't know that we need to, do we really need to add that in?
I don't think so. We could always add it, uh, that, that time the board could probably do.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adopt it as presented by the, okay?
That we adopt as presented, a dollar and at retirement.
All right. After 15 years, okay. Second?
Second, as presented.
All in favor? Okay. Tax releases, uh, Madam Manager?
Yes, Sheriff, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you deny in your agenda packet, um, is just some tax releases. Looks like there's several in that, what we're asking tonight. It's just, um, some releases that we received from Macon County, asking that we do the same on the town's end. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the releases as presented.
Somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor? Okay. Okay, uh, discussion on Phase Two of the water treatment plant financial analysis. Madam Manager?
Yes, Sheriff, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you deny is we're starting on the process of winding up on our current Phase One of the water treatment plant. We're looking to have, hopefully, everything completed as best we can, including paving, if, if the weather permits, um, by the middle of February, Phase One will be completed. With that being said, it is crucial for the, uh, board to start looking at Phase Two of the water treatment plant, um, to secure funding for Phase Two. It's about a two-year process. Um, I believe, Mayor Scott, you sent in with me as well, we reached, or reached out to some consultants, um, Denny Martin's firm, um, their WR Rabanelle, they've made a proposal. They were instrumental in helping us for Phase One as far as securing loan funding and some grant funding. So what we're asking, after speaking with them, it looks like the cycle, the state cycle to get in this process to start Phase Two to look at financing options opens in April of this year. So normally, we would like to budget it for something like that. Again, it was, you know, didn't expect it to be April. If the town doesn't get in this cycle, it would, what pushes back till April of 2020. So the second part of this, um, what they're also proposing to do is to look at our current, um, emergency water supply options, which is something I know has been a priority of some of the, uh, council members and our mayor. They're also willing to look at that Forge Two in their proposal while they're out here doing the scope. So, um, what we're looking at tonight, it would be $20,300 we're asking to take from retained earnings to start this process of Phase Two. Or also in this packet, if the board's so inclined, they did put in a second option about evaluating emerging, existing emergency response plan for $7,500, which would be $27,800. The crucial part to this tonight, if the board's not inclined to take the second option, is to at least please move forward with Option 1 to $20,300. Um, just something to get us at least started for Phase Two of this, of this process.
And I reviewed the agreement, it's generally fine. There are a few things in there, um, standard terms and conditions that we usually try to negotiate out, so I would just ask that your rules be subject to a, you know, satisfactory leeway to view.
It's not about taking out a job.
Okay.
And I, I would add one more thing, Sheriff and Council. Um, the $20,300 that we're asking for tonight from the retained earnings in water and sewer, as we go to approach the close of budget in June, um, it's with almost certainty, I would be willing to guarantee the board that with the way our department heads work and trying to be conservative when it comes to, um, an enterprise fund, I could see that easily being replenished at the end of this year, the $20,300 that we're asking for tonight.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, uh, we'll have a vote. Oh, yes, okay.
Motion to approve contingent upon, um, contract negotiation satisfactory to...
Uh, $20,300 for water and sewer retained earnings, please.
That, too.
Thank you.
Second?
What, I'm sorry, I'm in a bit of a fog, I'm having an allergy thing going on. Um, what about the additional $7,500? That was to look at the emergency water source?
The existing, no, that's to look at the existing emergency response plan, which we currently have in-house, and I do feel like that's something we could work at and reevaluate internally. I don't see that being in this, you know, a necessity at this time.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Yes, sir.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is to set a joint meeting with the Franklin Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Madam Manager?
Yes, Sheriff and Council. Um, well, note in your agenda packet, I know at our January, um, council meeting, we had ABC Board here, and there was some discussion about setting a joint meeting. Uh, suggested two dates, and I've attached an email, uh, between Mr. Todd Mason and myself. The two dates that I suggested would be Tuesday, January the 15th, or Tuesday, January the 22nd at 5:30 PM. You'll note in the email back from Mr. Mason, um, he did say that January 15th seemed to work best for the ABC Board, but again, this is a town council's pleasure, so just wanted to get some feedback on your thoughts of setting a joint meeting date with the Alcohol Beverage Control Board.
Okay.
I'm unable to attend the 15th.
I wouldn't want to meet in this. We were all together, and I can suggest that it's not something, I, I don't sense an urgency. It could be that there'd be a little bit more time to develop among the individual board members and you about, you know, possible sources of, uh, of areas to talk about, and I don't know that we would need to set a meeting tonight. Uh, I think we, we got the time to do it, and I'd like to, us to have a better idea among, for both sides as to some of the nature of the, what I think would be a very, very important meeting.
Okay. So we just want to table it, uh, for the time being, or...
Sheriff and Council, if I, um, if I may, maybe one option would be, 'cause I know there's been some questions, so maybe between now and, let's say, our February council meeting, if the board does have specific questions, they would like me to reach out to the ABC store and try and start getting a list. If you would just, you know, feel free to call me, just let me know some of the questions you have. I can start that list and reach out to Mr. Mason, and then I don't care to come back before the council in February and kind of give you where we're at with the ABC Board as far as where we're comfortable maybe suggesting some... the ABC Board as far as where we're comfortable maybe suggesting some joint meeting dates for this board to look at.
Everybody comfortable with that?
I am.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not able to meet that day. My apologies to the ABC Board.
No, I'll be glad to follow up. Like I said, if you just have any questions, please feel free, and I'll start, start making all this.
Okay. Madam Manager, you have a sale of some old town hall property?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we do. So this is good news. This is just an update, I guess it's been maybe at your November 2018 council meeting, I know Lazy Hiker, some members from their organization were here suggesting that they were looking at the possibility of purchasing, and they actually did move through, move forward with that process. They closed, and they sent us a check on December 21st in the amount of $235,000. And just a note for Mayor and Council tonight, that funding, that $235,000 that we have, that actually went into a revenue line item currently, which is coded to, it's a property code, and it's listed in the memo. That will stay there, the $235,000 will stay there unless the board decides to do otherwise to it until June 30th of this fiscal year. Once June 30th comes, it's going to roll into your fund balance. But just wanted to give the board a heads up that the town did close on that property, what we collected and where your funding is.
Sounds good. Okay, do we need a, we don't need a motion on that, okay? All right, under legal, Council, we have a discussion on the Town of Franklin ordinance regarding water and sewer section 52.09.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two ordinances are on the same topic, and both came out of discussions from the ordinance review committee. Just, first thing, discussion about the need of our public works to make sure that customers are aware of the need, when they have, need to get in service of a meter, they'll sometimes find that everything's, their path is blocked, there's some kind of shrubbery planted around it, or some, you know, some problem like that. So the first one is to handle by setting in your ordinances that you're requiring customers to keep at least a three-foot by three-foot section and at least 18 inches from ground level clear of those things, or be warned, you know, you may, and I would also advise administratively, I think it'd be a good idea to do some sort of notice to customers in the next building, something that this has been put into place, so they'll get some early notice of it. And then if they, you know, an emergency happens and you've got to get to deal with a meter, something might become of your, you know, your shrubbery or whatever, may go by the wayside. So that's the purpose of that one, and in a similar vein, the next one has to do with implementing the same kind of standard. In fact, we understood this is sort of the fire department standard about fire hydrants. I don't know how many actually happen to be located on private property, and they, you know, I think the vast, vast majority of them are in a public right of way anyway, this can easily happen to them, but nevertheless, it is their policy, and I think it should be in your ordinances that we require at least that kind of clearance for fire hydrants as well. And that has obvious sort of safety kind of provisions to it. Both of these are ripe for adoption tonight if it's in credit to the council. They don't require any kind of hearing or anything like that.
So people don't get in trouble, it's just they may lose a shrub if it's within 18 inches of a meter box or a fire hydrant.
If the town get in trouble for cutting down...
If they can't read the meter, they'll just guesstimate the building to be high. What do you think?
I think that's what they do with mine, because I think mine's buried, you know, don't see anything about that in here, but...
Well, but Dad, if they're out there looking for a hydrant, it's in a blackberry bush.
Right.
So, I think that's one of the things we're looking at.
And it's not three feet each side, it's only 18 inches each side, so I mean, that's not really that big of a...
Is that a motion?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Do you adopt both ordinances?
We have a motion and a second to adopt both ordinances.
And again, it doesn't stop people from putting a bush there, it just says the town's going to cut it if they need to.
Right. Exactly.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, let's get to that. We have one announcement. The town hall offices will be closed on January the 21st, and I'm observant to Martin Luther Jr. Jr. All right, we're on the table. Anybody got anything?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council? McCray?
Go Clips and... We're trying not to get into this topic.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, of course. I was going to say roll time, but I dislike both these teams, but I'll probably watch it. I met with, in a follow-up to the Greenway connection under the bridge, I've met with loads of people, but today I met with Frog Quarters, a couple of their representatives, and Seth Adams, the county rec director, and it sounds like there's broad support for making this connection of the Greenway under the, under the town bridge, but it's going to take some effort by us, and I know Nathaniel has been working on it. Any updates, Nathaniel?
At this time, we're looking to move forward with NC DOT, with a meeting with them to see where they stand for the project, and this week we will meet with them and see what their stance is.
There's a lot of excitement. A lot of people are happy that this is...
A lot of community support on that.
Yeah, there is.
Hiking club, everybody. Mr. Collins?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think, just want to add one final thing that I think maybe got a little hidden in the budget amendments. Just kind of a thank you to Travis Talent. He secured the Town of Franklin a $5,000 grant through the League of Municipalities Med Cost Program for healthy living and nutrition and exercise equipment, so just kind of wanted to make a note of that, that's something that we're working on, so.
Really cool. Thank you, sir.
Good job, Travis.
Okay, Mr. Collins had a vague motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Is it still applied?
It's still up.
Oh, is that second? All in favor? Okay, good night, good meeting.
Start it slow and fast.
I picked 6:55.